I'd like to call the January 6th, 2014 meeting of the Williamsburg City Council to order. Today we have a new city council clerk, Lisa Judkins. Ms. Judkins, would you call the role, please?
Ms. Judkins here. Mr. Pond.
Here.
Mayor Hallman.
Here.
Vice Mayor Freyler.
Here.
Mr. Foster.
Here.
Lisa, again, welcome.
Thank you.
First agenda item for today are items for a city council meeting of January 9th. This is a time to review any of the upcoming items for that meeting, as well as take any comment from the public, both for that meeting or for any other issue that the public would like to present to council. Jack, is there anything for our meeting in particular?
Yes. Among the items on Thursday's meeting, we have two public hearings. One is concerns of telecommunications franchise for Metro Fiber Networks, Inc., and a public hearing on some zoning amendments that are required due to Virginia code changes. We also have a city manager report on the FY '15 budget process, and under unfinished business are the sign regulation update, which we'll discuss later today.
Any questions? Would anybody like to address city council on matters for Thursday or any other matter? If not, we'll move to our next agenda item, which is background presentations and discussions. And we have three today. The first deals with the Virginia retirement system. There are two parts to that. The first is VRS funding status. Phil, would you like to introduce our guest today?
Good afternoon, Mayor Hallman, and members of council. We're fortunate enough to have the people from VRS that can really speak to the numbers that we started to talk to you last month about where we are with our actuarial evaluation and all that. We have today Chief Financial Officer Barry Faison from VRS, and also Senior Staff Actuary Rory Bedura, who will speak with you. I think Rory's going to kick it off for us.
Yes.
Great. Great. Welcome, and thank you. Thank you again for coming and spending the time with us today.
Appreciate the opportunity to come down and share with you the results of this year's valuation, and kind of take a look at historically how your plan has kind of weathered the storm over the last couple of recessions, and kind of look at where you've been, and take a look into the future, and we'll show you kind of what we're expecting maybe to happen over the next couple of years. So, will get me started? All right. So, I just wanted to take, and if you have questions while we're going through it, feel free to ask at that time, and hopefully can answer them for you. Just want to do a quick overview, and look at the membership kind of building up. I just wanted to show that, you know, over the last, you know, 10 years, the population for the city of Williamsburg plan has remained relatively level. The active population has taken a little bit of a decrease, and that occurred in 2008, but since then has remained relatively level. So, you're not seeing any, you know, increases in cost due to additional employees coming onboard. And as you can see during that same time, you are having a little bit of creep with the retirees, so the ratio of your inactive employees to your active employees has creeped up a little bit, but not that great over the last couple of years. So, and this was the schedule that just shows over the last 10 years, kind of the unfunded liability of the plan, and probably one of the reasons that we're here is just to try to get an understanding of, obviously, we've had a couple of major recessions over the, you know, the last six, seven, eight years here now. And due to that, you know, you've seen the funded status of the plan back in 2004 was almost 88 percent, and as of this current valuation that was just done in June 30th, 2013, you can see we've actually ticked up, but we're still at 71.6 percent. And so, what we were hoping to do today was to try to give you an idea of kind of what's happened over the last 10 years, and trying to give you a feel for what goes into the contribution rates, and hopefully give you a picture of what you can expect over the next couple of years from the retirement plan.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Are you going to talk in more detail about the actuarial accrued liability and what goes into that?
Yeah.
And what's, because as I look at this, I can understand sort of why the actuarial value of assets hasn't gone up as much, given, although this time next year, we ought to see a little bit different picture than that. But what's not clear to me is why the actuarial accrued liability has gone up so sharply, particularly given the numbers of employees haven't changed that much.
Yeah. And what, looking at it from a real high, high level, I mean, basically what happens when we value the plan, you know, if you step back and look at, say you had one individual, and you're looking at trying to put a liability on that person's benefit. With the funding method, you have, you start out from day one, and you would say you would have no assets, and the person has a benefit that's based on a formula that gives them a, you know, a benefit based on a percentage of pay times their service. And so, what you're basically trying to do is you're trying to accrue assets over the person's career, so that by the time they reach retirement, you have enough money in place to pay their benefits during retirement. And so, you really have two components. You have a normal cost piece, which is the money that it costs to provide benefits for a year for an individual or a group, if you sum them all together. And then, the accrued liability is what has been, is basically those normal costs added up year over year, so that, and the accrued liability is a present value. And so, you have, you kind of can project out and say, okay, at age 65, you know, if this person has a benefit of $20,000 per year, the value of that, you know, we assume that, you know, they're going to live for, you know, 20 years after they retire. You put a number on that and say, you know, for an individual, it might be, you know, $200,000. We expect this is going to cost over that point in time. And what that accrued liability is, is that $200,000 is what we expect at age 65, and when they retire. And then, when we do these valuations, we back that up with a discount rate back to today. And so, the accrued liability is going to increase year over year, just because you're moving closer to retirement, and so that where you had discounted it before by some factor, which we use 7 percent for our valuation, it's going to increase by that much. So, your accrued liability to date, you're going to add on additional normal cost and interest, and that's why you see your accrued liability is going to grow.
So, even though our numbers haven't gone up, the age of those numbers has gone up, and that's what's driving it, is that?
Right. That's what drives some of the accrued liability going. So, even in a year in which you wouldn't have any gains or losses, where everything worked out exactly as we assumed, you would still see an increasing accrued liability because of the discounting that went on year over year. And in a perfect world, your assets would be keeping pace with that. And in years where they don't, we, if you have a gain or a loss, and, you know, recent years, we've had some losses, and that contributes to, you know, the unfunded liability increasing. So, your accrued liability is going up, your assets aren't keeping pace, your, you know, your unfunded liability grows. So, that's kind of a high-level overview, but we'll get a little more into the pieces as we go through this.
Thank you.
Is that it?
Yeah.
And this kind of, we touched on the list a little bit, but, you know, some of the reasons for the decline in that funded status over the last 10 years is, you know, a lot of it has to do with the investment returns, you know, over the last seven or eight years. I think the worst year was actually in 2009, fiscal year ending 2009, where we had that huge, I can't remember the exact thing, it was 20, negative 20-something percent return. So, it was off, you know, the asset return was off by nearly 30 percent from what we had expected. So, and one of the things, one of the methods that we use when doing the valuation, so that you don't have huge fluctuations in your contributions each year, is we try to smooth out those asset gains and losses over five years, so that with the big loss that occurred in 2009, you're only going to recognize 20 percent of that loss in any year until it's fully amortized out. And so, you know, we started in 2009, and 2013 was actually the last year of amortizing that huge loss. So, we're expecting in next year's valuation that we'll see, you know, even a tick up in the actuarial value of assets, just because that huge loss is going to be dropping off. And the other thing, I know we get a lot of questions with, you know, there's been quite a few changes to the pension plan over the last couple of years as well, and, you know, but again, people aren't seeing the effects of the savings as of yet, because, you know, most of the changes that have occurred have been on future employees, not on the current population. So, they haven't done anything, you know, done any takeaways from the current employees. And in doing that, you're not going to get immediate savings, you're going to get savings in the future when the new employees come in and are under the new pension revisions that have taken place over the last couple of years. And we'll talk a little bit more about that as well. Well, I'm not sure what happened to that slide with the title, but that's supposed to say progress. Basically, this shows over the last couple of years, it's showing your assets and your liabilities over the last couple of years, and the blue bars behind are the funded status. And so, I just wanted to point out a couple of things that had have occurred over that time. The first being, as you can see, if you went back to 2001, you know, the funded status was over 100 percent, and your assets and your liabilities were pretty close to being the same. So, you're pretty well-funded at that point in time. And as we moved forward to 2005, one of the things that happened was that the discount rate used for the plan changed from 8 percent to 7 and 1/2 percent. And so, by doing that, you know, dropping the discount rate by 50 basis points, that immediately increased the liability of the plan. And so, that's why you see the little bit widening and the drop in funds, unfunded status that occurred in 2005. And then, as we move through from 2005 to 2009, basically, you can see that the funded status remained relatively level throughout that period of time. And it wasn't until, like I said, after 2009, when we actually went and did the 2010 valuation, you know, that was the first year that we were, number one, recognizing the first series of the loss that occurred, but we also changed the discount rate again, and lowered the discount rate to 7 percent, kind of to meet expectations of what had occurred with the market, and where, you know, seven years ago, an 8 percent rate of return, long-term rate of return was pretty common, you know, but, you know, stepped forward eight years, and we were getting, you know, pressure, you know, from auditors to relook at that. And so, we've had to lower our expectation of what our expected long-term rate of return is. And so, you know, we sit at 7 percent today, and again, we first switched to that in 2010. And so, over these last couple of years, even after, you know, we saw that first occurrence of that, and then in 2010 was the first year in which we had some pension reform with the introduction of Plan Two, and which had different provisions for new members that came in and after that point in time. And so, there was some projected savings that they were expecting with that, but again, that was for new members coming in. So, there wasn't any immediate savings, and so you didn't see any increase in the funded status at that point in time, nor did you see any substantial change in the accrued liability. And so, we've kind of creeped through, again, recognizing losses all the way from 2009 all the way up until today, you know, working through that huge loss that occurred in 2009. And like I said before, we expect that next year, the actuarial value of assets, we expect to see an uptick in that, you know, due to the fact that we're dropping off this huge amortization of a loss that occurred of nearly 30 percent of the fund back in 2009.
Of that growth in the accrued liability, you've essentially reduced the discount rate 100 basis points. What part of that is the result of that reduction in the discount rate? If you could parse that out, how would you talk?
The, I think the, if you looked at the, if you lowered the discount, or if you changed the discount rate back to 8 percent, I think, I think there's almost a 11 or 12 percent difference in the accrued liability due to that. So, if you flipped to 8 percent, you still wouldn't be 100 percent funded, but you're right, that's part of the, but if we were to keep it at 8 percent, and you, you know, we can't achieve it, you know, you just get, you know, you're going to incur losses, and you're still going to get the change.
No, I completely understand that. But also, the sensitivity of the liability to the discount rate is really important.
Yeah. I mean, so that did have a major impact on the creep of the accrued liability, was having those two changes in discount rate during that period of time.
Thanks, sorry.
And then, just looking at the contribution rates, again, the contribution rates made up of that normal cost and the amortization of the unfunded or accrued liability rate. And so, I just wanted to break this down and just show you, looking back at 2003, and then looking at the most recent valuation. And I just wanted to show you that the normal cost, or the cost of providing benefits, has remained fairly level over this period of time. And so, you know, the major change in the rate that's occurred, you know, isn't due to the benefit being provided or the demographics of the group. As you can see, it's really driven, if you go down to the next box, where you look at the amortization of the unfunded liabilities, it really has to do with that unfunded liability rate. And we're going to talk a little bit more about the unfunded liability rate, but you can see, you know, back in 2003, the unfunded liability was only 2.23 percent, and where today, it's at, you know, 10.17 percent of payroll, you know, which outpaces almost the total normal cost rate. It's almost reached that level. And one of the things that's happened over the last few years is that the way that you recognize or pay down the unfunded liability has changed. It's changed a couple of times over the past 10 years, but back in 2003, the way that we amortized the unfunded liability was using a 20-year open amortization method. And an open amortization method is basically, if you went out and every year you did the valuation, and I'll kind of equate it to a mortgage, it was as if you got a new mortgage every year, and amortized it over 20 years. So, every year, you know, the first period comes, you know, the unfunded liability, you calculate the payment, you make the payment, and then when the next year rolls around, instead of amortizing the remaining balance over 19 years, you reamortize it again over 20 years. And so, that method has been in place, and it was actually a method that we were following the government accounting standards that were in place. Almost all the public sector plans, you know, followed GASB as the Government Accounting Standard Board. They had put out their recommendations or the requirements for the annual required contribution. And so, nearly all the public sector plans were following, you know, their guidance. And the 20-year open method was, is one of the things that they, you know, had recommended at the time. And so, that's what we had been following all up until 2013. And one of the reasons for that, as I'll jump forward here, was that in June of 2012, GASB revised their public pension accounting standards. And when they did that, they made a clear distinction that they were not, the standards that they were putting out were not for funding a pension plan, they were going to be strictly for accounting. And so, there was this separation between the funding of pension plans and the accounting of pension plans that up to this point in time, we hadn't, we hadn't had. And so, since we had been following GASB standards, we basically had to come up with a new funding policy. And so, over the past year, we did that, and there were several national organizations that kind of chimed in on, you know, what they thought the funding standard should be. And we actually put our funding standards together prior to the finalization of the guidance that was provided, but we had heard, you know, some leaking of what it was going to be. So, our standards met everything that eventually came out of that national group. But one of the major changes that came out of that was the way that you were allowed to amortize the unfunded liability. And it's a pretty substantial change, because now they're no longer allowing or recommending that you do this open amortization. They want you to do the closed method, which would kind of be if you were following your mortgage and stepping it down, so that if you're amortizing something over 20 years, you know, 20 years down the road, it would be paid off. Where under the old method, you know, 20 years down the road, you could be sitting at the same place you were when you started, you know, basically paying off interest each year and not eating much into the principal. And so, I did some examples, I don't know if they're on the next slide, or, well, this is kind of just what I talked about with the amortization method. And in detail, with the new method, what we decided to do is that when we went to this new, what's that?
Do you want to look at the next slide?
Well, this one here, let me.
We have one in our.
Oh, do you have something else?
With the chart, and it's got the projected contribution rates.
You have that one?
Yes.
Okay. Let me talk about this one real quick, and then I'll flip back to that. All this one really says is that when we went to the new method, we had, you know, most of these plans had a current unfunded liability, and so as to not, so as to not increase rates or create a huge increase in the annual required contribution, beginning in the first year, we wanted to create kind of a transition with this new method. And so, what we did is since we, the amortization method that we were currently using was a 30-year amortization, and it was going to walk down to 20 years and then remain open. And what we decided to do was take the legacy liability and amortize it over 30 years on a closed basis, so that after 30 years, that would be gone. And any new unfunded liability after '71, 2013, would be amortized over a 20-year closed period. And I want to kind of show you the effects of that with this chart. So, on the left-hand side are the contribution rates that are projected, and please don't keep a copy of this and come to me in 2030 and say, you said that this was, these are just estimates, assuming everything happens as we assume. But on the left are the contribution rates, and as you can see, the red line is what we expect the contribution rates to be under the new method. The blue line is what the contribution rates would have been under the previous method. And as you can see, they're pretty similar over the first 10 years. And what happens after that 10 years is that, under the old method, after we stepped down and got to 20 years on the amortization scale, it would have went to a 20-year open period. So, at that point in time, it would have been like you're every year getting a new mortgage and amortizing whatever unfunded liability is out there. So, as you can see, the contribution rates under the old method would have decreased over time, but if you look at the chart on the right, what would have happened is that the chart on the right shows the funded status. So, after 30 years, the red line shows where the funded status is going to be using the new method. So, we expect after 30 years, you're going to be 100 percent funded again. Under the old method, you would only be about 95 percent funded, and if you look at today, you've got like about 14, well, a little over 14 million of unfunded liability. Well, it might even be more than that, because I'm up at 15 when we started this. I think it starts at 17. But the unfunded liability starting in 15 would have been about $14 million. 30 years from now, if we use, if we continue to use the open method, you would still have $14 million of unfunded liability. And the reason that is, is in these examples, without the assets performing better than what we assume, when you use an open amortization method, you don't eat into the unfunded liability, you're basically just paying off the interest and not the principal. So, the old method really relied on good asset returns, and it really relied on the long-term actuarial science of, over time, you expect the gains and the losses to kind of balance out. But with that huge loss that occurred in 2009, I mean, that was certainly out of the ordinary. And so, we had this huge loss, and it was, it's, we weren't going to see huge gains of 30 percent to offset that loss. And so, that's why the unfunded liability almost reached a tipping point, where without getting returns above 7 percent year over year, you weren't going to eat down the unfunded liability. But with this new method, it kind of forces you to pay it off, even if you don't have excessive returns on assets. Now, if you do have asset returns over 7 percent, then, you know, your climb to 100 percent is going to occur even quicker. But if you don't, if you only get 7 percent return, the new method is still going to get you to the 100 percent funded, where the old method would not. Did I beat that enough? And now, just to talk a little bit about pension reform and the impact that you may see with your plan because of the most recent rounds of pension reform, and specifically with the hybrid plan, with the introduction of Plan Two that occurred in 2010, there were some savings, but they weren't as substantial as the savings that were projected with the round of pension reform that occurred in 2011, 2012. Some additional changes were made to the Plan Two, lowered the factor to 1.65 percent. And then, there was also the introduction of this hybrid plan for employees hired after 1-1, 2014. And also, there's, you know, for anyone who wants to opt in during this window from January 1st to April 30th, they can also opt into the hybrid. But again, But again, you know, the savings associated with the hybrid plan are going to be seen, you know, 15, 20 years out because you need to get a substantial part of your population in that plan before you'll see those savings. And so as the third bullet says there, you know, any of the legacy unfunded liability is not going to be reduced because of this plan. It's only future liabilities that we expect to see the savings with. And looking at, if you look at your plan, which falls into this municipal plans, because your plans are kind of a blend with members who have LEOs benefits and members who don't have LEOs benefits, and members who have that hazardous duty coverage generally cost a little bit more than members who don't. And the fact that the hybrid plan is not, that those hazardous duty members are not part of the hybrid plan, they'll stay on their current plans. And so based on whatever the blend is of your hazardous duty members and non-hazardous duty members, you would, you would have a different impact on your plan. And I think your plan is, when they did the estimate for this valuation, actually fell in at 1.38%, I think it was. So you're, you might have 35 or 36% or maybe it's even a little higher than that, members in, with hazardous duty coverage or LEOs benefits. So long-term, you can expect that the, the normal cost component, which if we go back here, that normal cost rate of the 11.87 is the total, total normal cost rate. The employer portion would be the 6.87. Long-term, you could expect that, you know, to be in the five and a half percent range, you know, rather than 6.87. That's what the impact of, of just the hybrid plan would be on future rates. And again, that's down the road, and it really depends on how quickly, you know, your, your population turns over. So that was just kind of an overview. If you have questions or we didn't touch on maybe some of the things that you were curious about, we'd be happy to try to answer them. If not, if you think of something.
Well, thank you very much. Let me turn to council to see if they have questions or comments.
Just a couple of questions. How, if you took the, one of the graphs that you used with the city's liability versus assets, maybe the one on page six. If you compared that to the overall VRS fund, the entire fund, would they look pretty similar?
Well, the city of Williamsburg is actually in a little bit better shape than, than the total VRS plan. And, and one of the reasons why is because the contributions that the General Assembly puts into the state plans, they have the ability to override the recommended contribution. And so over the years, it's been very rare that we've gotten a, the full recommended contribution to go into the state-funded plans. And so where your funded status is at 71%, the state's funded status is maybe at 63% or somewhere in that neighborhood.
So then maybe, let me rephrase the question. If you took the, all the local components of VRS state aside, would then, they mirror this pretty well?
I actually have the, I can give you a-
It seems like the only real difference between one locality and the other would be the assets that they're putting in versus the ones that are coming out for their current retiree.
Yeah, I mean, you've got, you've got difference in, in the demographics. You have differences in the level of LEOs members and, but the, the average funded ratio for all plans, all local plans is 79.2%. And I believe you guys were at 70-
71?
71.6?
Right. Yeah. So looking back on, gosh, I think it's page three, where we have the schedule of funding progress, city of Williamsburg, the chart that you use in, from 2004 to 2013, those 10 years. The actuarial value of assets at second column, fiscal year 2009 is 43.5 million, and fiscal year 2013 is 43.5 million. When you say actuarial value, are you talking about a five-year rolling average of what that was?
Well, it's, the only thing that's, it's the, the actuarial value is a smooth value of the market value of assets. And so what we smooth is, we take the market value, and then we smooth the gains and losses that have occurred over the last five years. And so, let me see if I've got for you that with the market.
What is the actual value of our assets for those years?
The, the market value of your assets today, or as of June 30th, was actually 45.7.
And what was it at the end of 2009?
2009, I don't know if I'm going to have handy right here.
It's not in the ballot.
Yeah. I'd have to get that for you.
Okay. Because one of the reasons, and this is what brought up the question last month, is that even with the downturn that we experienced, if you look at investments of endowments across the country, if you look at, gosh, even some of the universities that have been criticized, like Harvard, which has maybe chastised, castigated in the press, their annualized rate of return over those five years, including 2009, is 1.7%. If you look at another Ivy League school like Columbia, they're at 6.8%. And if you just look at the Nicubo average over that same period, it's 3.8%. So I'm just wondering, what's the difference in their investment strategies? Or do you have, does VRS have guidelines imposed upon them that are significantly different from endowment management of, of other funds?
Well, our investment group has, does have funding guidelines and a funding policy that they follow. And they've actually, over the past year, taken a look at that and have made some changes to the, the funding policy. To be honest with you, I don't specifically know all the, the details of that. And Barry, I don't know if, if you know off the top of your head.
I don't have the details either, but I'd say-
Could you, would you come to the microphone, please?
Can't throw my voice in.
I don't have the details of the investment policy, but I know we have our investment strategy. It's perhaps maybe, maybe varies from some of these other groups. As far as our performance horizon, the length of time, I mean, we're, we're looking at a retiree from employment to the last payment to the last beneficiary. They have 75, 85-year period of time. So our investment strategy is sort of long-term and perhaps longer than some of the endowments may be. So some of the things that we're going into may have, maybe less liquid. I know we're into alternative investments, moved more recently into more real, fixed assets or real assets, properties and things like that. Strategies change over the time to try to take advantage of value in the market. But again, it's a forward-looking sort of thing for us, and I don't know what the strategy, perhaps differences are between that and some of these other funds you're talking about.
I guess that would be interesting to know too, because a lot of these endowments are using non-traditional methods, are using hedge funds, are using real estate investment trusts. But if you took a 60-40 stock bond portfolio and averaged that over the same five-year period, the return is still 6.4% annualized. So it, I just, I, I'm not trying to be critical, I'm just trying to understand, what's the difference in the strategy that VRS is employing versus, and it might be a very good reason for that.
Well, I think, I think one of the things would help is we get, we'll get you the same schedule with the market value of assets on here because you'll see real returns versus the, the, the five-year smoothing alters the return impact from what you would have. So even in this case, for instance, we've got a change of a million dollars from '12 to '13, but we've got in '13, some of the losses, but you've also got, we had 11.8% return this past year. You've got 7% of that in that, in that actuarial value of assets and 20% of the spread between 7 and 11.8. The rest of it's still in the bank. So that's the reason that the market value of assets is actually higher than this at this point in time. But you'll see a lot more fluctuation, and that'll be one of the things that is an issue going forward when we're talking about the change in the accounting standards that we're concerned about at IAM as far as reporting this market value of assets. In fact, we've got to reflect that versus the-
And we can appreciate that. You're not making those decisions. I mean, that, and we're not alone in that boat. I mean, there are a lot of localities.
Well, we'll get this together and send it up tomorrow.
Okay.
But it's fair to say that the VRS invests much more conservatively than, of those, some of those other institutions that you, that you mentioned, or even on the private side.
Yeah. And I would think, again, we've got, I think our, our group tends to be on the conservative side. I think, I think I would have to say that. And it's because, you know, there are a lot of ramifications, there's a lot of impact if it doesn't go right. We don't have a group of constituents to go to and say, you know, we had a bad year in the market, you want to give us some more money and we'll name another building after you or something. We don't have that luxury and so.
Well, and then that begs the question, if it's going to be that much more conservative, is the model, does it make sense? Because even at 7%, if you, you know, more conservative than what? That's getting 11 or 12% that you're backing down to 7?
And so how do those decisions get made?
And this is a whole bigger problem.
Yeah. And I think you would certainly, you'll get a different picture if you look at the market values versus the smooth actuarial values.
That would be helpful.
But we'll do the same, we'll, we'll actually do, give you the same chart with market values, and you can look at your unfundeds against market and your funded ratios against market. I'll tell you that probably in eight, in six or seven, you'd be close to 100% funded. I did that for the, a group as a whole. And you do approach it, but then in nine, in 2009, everybody goes down to about 70% in one year. So it's a lot more dramatic than what you see here.
Thank you. That's all.
Sure.
Scott?
Yeah, no, additional questions?
Well, thank you very much. This was very helpful, and we look forward to the additional information, and we will stay in touch.
Okay.
Thank you very much for coming today and for your presentation. Next part of this is Assistant Manager Jody Miller talking about the hybrid retirement plan for the city.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. We touched briefly on this in the previous presentation, but I'm going to dive a little deeper into the new VRS hybrid retirement plan, what the plan's all about. And then more specifically, I wanted to make you aware of some of our personnel policies that we have amended in order to, to work with this new VRS hybrid plan that's been provided. So just a quick overview of, of the new plan. We've talked a little bit about this over the fall, and now it's officially been implemented. It's for new employees hired on or after July 1st, 2014. Existing employees, those Plan One and Plan Two employees, may opt in to this new hybrid plan. Once they opt in, they have to continue to be a hybrid plan employee. The opt-in window is January to April 30th of this year is the opportunity to do that. As mentioned previously, hazardous duty employees are not eligible to participate. They cannot, either as a new employee or as an existing employee, opt into the new VRS hybrid retirement plan. And the big difference between the hybrid plan and the current Plan One and Plan Two is that the hybrid plan consists of two parts, is defined benefit and defined contribution. So you can see how that pension reform is starting to get away from more just exclusively the defined benefit, but having defined benefit and a defined contribution aspect to it. Employees must participate in both parts of the hybrid plan if you are a hybrid plan employee. The city's contribution to both portions will not exceed that actuarial rate set by VRS for the defined benefit plan. So from a city side, if you're a hybrid employee, it's not going to cost the city additional money. And as we discussed this past fall, requirement for this new plan is that short-term and long-term disability insurance be, be allowed or is required as part of the plan. And if you recall, at our October retreat, council decided to stay with the VRS program to provide this short-term and long-term disability option. As part of your agenda materials, we included a chart that's actually VRS has provided that gives you, I think, a really good side-by-side comparison of all the plans, both Plan One, Plan Two, and the hybrid plan. So I just wanted to mention that because what I just talked about is a sort of a higher level overview of the new hybrid plan. But specifically because, excuse me, because we are going to have hybrid plan employees, there are two specific areas of our city personnel manual that we're amending to better work with the hybrid plan. The first is with the city's deferred compensation 457 plan and the incentive that the city currently provides for employees to participate in this plan. As you're aware, currently, if an employee puts 4% of their salary, and the city will match 1%. And this is in addition to the VRS retirement that's offered to current Plan One and Plan Two employees. So for our, for the hybrid plan, what we are implementing is that for every 1%, the employee contributes, that the city matches 0.25% up to a 1% total match. And that makes it equitable among both Plan One and Plan Two employees with the city as well as the new hybrid plan employees. In addition to the 457 plan incentive change that we're implementing, we're also implementing a new leave system for hybrid plan employees. And this is probably the biggest change with our personnel manuals with hybrid plan employees. We're replacing the sick and vacation leave benefits with a paid time off approach. And what this does is it replaces now what, what employees of Plan One and Plan Two get as far as their sick and vacation, and it increases with their length of employment. So for example, what we have now is for hybrid employees, they would get 1.5 days per month paid time off for a total of 18 days per year. Paid time off can be used for a variety of reasons. It can be sick leave, it can be vacation, it can be personal, it just would need to be approved by, by a supervisor. And there's a chart in the amended personnel policies that was included with their agenda packet that shows with length of service how that paid time off approach would increase over a number of years of service. Family medical leave is still required. It's a federal guideline that's still required that does not change going to a paid time off approach, as well as how we handle bereavement leave. We have, we've talked and discussed with our department heads and key staff, some of the new provisions on the personnel manual as it relates to the new hybrid employee plan. And new information on not only the hybrid plan, but also the changes to the city's personnel manual will be included on the city's intranet site for employees, as well as we're holding two information sessions, one on the 22nd of January and the other on the 30th, for employees to learn more. That's all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Julie. Any questions?
Existing employees may opt in to the hybrid plan. Could you talk a little bit about why an employee might or might, might choose to or not to do that?
There are a variety of reasons, and that's why it's important for employees to really understand the options and the benefits to both plans. I would say a reason an employee may consider opting in is if they want more direct control over how their, that, on that defined contribution side, how that's, how that's invested, that they could do that. Also, with the hybrid plan, there is the short-term and long-term disability requirement that's required as part of that plan that's not required under Plan One and Plan Two. But it's important, and that's why we're having these information sessions for employees to really understand the difference- to really understand the differences for the plans and what makes sense for them personally.
Can you explain this change to the paid time off system? Compare that with what we have done in the past.
It's, it's very comparable, and we tried to make it so that even though we're having essentially two approaches to leave, that it'd be very comparable to existing employees as far as number of hours they would get off, or a number of days a year that an employee would get off based on years of service.
Yes.
Thanks.
And so as we were just talking about investment strategy, under this hybrid plan, an employee may have, will have greater flexibility to invest in some, something that's more risky if that's their choice.
Exactly.
And so they could see greater benefits. But then the risk is, as we were just talking about, they may not see it. And so that would be a good reason for somebody to make that determination. If they feel that they can manage that money more smartly than the VRS, then they, they would opt out and do that. So I could see that it gives them the freedom to, to make more money essentially.
If they know how to invest.
Right. There's their lines of risk, right?
I'm, I'm interested in the, the paid time off because I had a staff at one point in my life, and the manipulating of sick days so you could go see your child's school program stuff. This strikes me as a much better way to do it. Just seems cleaner.
We do have a provision for, for things like that where we do allow employees to have school leave to go to conferences and those kinds of things. But for, because of the short-term disability component specifically of the hybrid plan, it made sense to go to the paid time off approach and dealing with leave time for, for that hybrid employee.
Yeah.
So what, what do you anticipate our employees are going to do? Do you have any sense at this point what fraction will go to hybrid?
That's a good question. We're just rolling out the information, so time will tell. We'll know in the next three or four months. Now remember, hazardous duty employees do not qualify. So that's about 80, 80 or so of our whole time.
That's fire and police, right.
That's fire and police, so they're automatically not able to, to, to qualify for it. So we'll know in a few months how many employees will decide to opt in.
And why is that? That hazardous duty employees can't?
That's just the way the plan was set up, and that's from the General Assembly.
I just, the representatives of employee groups around the state opposed being put into the hybrid plan, and it was mainly, that's mainly the reason.
Huh, okay, thank you.
With the General Assembly.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, one other question.
Is the reason for the, the short-term and long-term disability insurance requirement, is that related at all to the combination of sick and vacation into the paid time off?
It is. And let me explain sort of our thinking on that. The way that the short-term disability, specifically the short-term disability requirement is set up, employees get up to 125 days short-term disability, and it's paid a percentage of your salary depending on your length of service. Whereas right now, you have to use accumulated sick leave for essentially family medical leave or short-term medical leave. And so that was the reason going to the paid time off approach, it didn't seem, it didn't seem fair to existing employees to have that one level of essentially paid short-term disability leave for, for new employees essentially, and then not have a way to make it work on the, on the existing medical side for existing employees. So that really impacted the decision there.
Jody, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you again. And I hope, you know, once the enrollment period is over, you'll give us an update on, on what's happened.
Certainly will.
Maybe if I could. How do you, I mean, do you bring employees in in groups and kind of walk them through this with the education process?
We will. We will. So we'll, we'll hold two information sessions. So we'll share the information with employees, the information that VRS provides. They have a wealth of information on their website, as well as our revisions or amendments to the city's personnel manual. I think one of the best tools that's out there is that comparison chart that was shared with council that really sort of lays, lays out the differences among the plans. And then we'll host two informational sessions in January so that people have an opportunity to review the materials, ask questions. And even after that, they have until the end of April to, to elect to be in the program. So there's a lot of time to ask questions, get more information about the new hybrid plan.
Something that's voluntary like this, it'd be nice to ensure that they have the availability to give whatever information they need. Thank you.
Okay. Jody, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you all for being here today, too. We really appreciate it. Our next presentation has to do with the Arts Month and economic impact update. And we have Arts Month Coordinator Terry Buntrock and Tourism Alliance Senior VP for Tourism Bob Harris are here.
I've got some press which I'll give to you if that's all right.
Yeah.
If you'd like your press.
Terry, welcome.
Thank you. Mayor, City Council, staff, it's so exciting to be able to be with you two months after Arts Month and share new, now and next with you. And I tried to divide my presentation kind of into those categories. This cover sheet also is more than just a cover sheet. We added two weeks to Arts Month this year, so we actually were seven weeks long. We like a long month. And so, and why do I click here? Okay. I'll just, Bob will speak to you more in-depth about the chamber's new television ads, but they did create some beautiful new ads this year, and I just wanted to acknowledge that. They also made the website much more user-friendly for 2013. Our out-of-area advertising concentrates on, our focuses on women in the 35 to 65 age range. And so new programming this year developed tools that would help arts providers, restaurants, and retailers reach out to that demographic. And we developed a tool called Art Inspired, which was simply a theme, but we use that theme for shopping, for artful dining, for, to develop stories, art-inspired stories. We also concentrated this year on art that spoke uniquely of this place. And going forward, we are concentrating on experiential programming. So in that first theme, Art Inspires Cuisine, we tried to create a direct link and partnership between the restaurants, artists and musicians, art galleries and arts events, so that we would expand the food and wine offerings and, and create more artful dining experiences for the month. That effort was then augmented by Colonial Williamsburg's Taste Traditions, the Gallery Crawl, Occasion for the Arts, and other events. So chefs created special dishes embracing the theme, and artists and artisans created artwork directly about the theme. And we're so happy that Colonial Williamsburg's Taste Tradition is coming back this year in 2014. Two examples of this also is the Farm-to-Table event that takes place on Duke of Gloucester Street, and you'll probably recognize some people in that picture. And the Colonial Williamsburg's various and other restaurants as well, spirits and, and wine events. We did not limit Art Inspires Cuisine just to the visual arts. We also reached out to musicians, and the picture under Blue, or above Blue Talon Bistro is, took place during an occasion for the arts, and that is an occasion for wine and an occasion for beer, which upmarkets that Another theme was Art Inspires Fashion for You and Your Home. That gave area retailers an opportunity to take advantage of Arts Month for in-store events. We also had a real coup this year. The Virginia Fashion Week has always taken place in Virginia Beach. We got them to bring three days of their week-long programming to Williamsburg this year. They liked us as a venue so much that they are bringing everything to us next year. Sorry, Virginia Beach. And so we'll have in the fall, five days of Virginia Fashion Week. They're coming back in February 2015 for another event, and then we hope they'll be back again in the fall of, of 2015 as well. And that picture there is actually one of the couture fashion shows that took place in Trinkle Hall. We also, the last time I saw many of you, was actually in this building, and we took advantage of underutilized space in the city, and we're looking for some more for this year to create fashion events. And that, over in the side and yard of this building, Chesapeake Bank paid for a tent which we called the City Square Arts Pavilion. I love that name. And we had trash-to-fashion accessory shows and fashion shows in that building, which were correspondent with the art show that was here at Stryker. And of course, then the culminating grind finale for Art Inspires Fashion is, of course, the Glenn Close Exhibition that the College of William &amp; Mary put together this year. Art Inspires Stories, we know, and you know yourself, if you meet the artist, if you talk to the artist, it deepens your experience. We all love to meet the chef. We love to, to, when we're traveling, to feel like we get to know the local community. So this year, anchored by the Tucker Arnold Storytelling Festival, which takes place in the Kimball, we added events around that, a Pachacca Festival and storytelling and book and author events. The College and Next Door Neighbor Magazine and the City of Williamsburg underwrote the, those festivals that you see there. Our much-beloved This Century Art Gallery celebrated Arts Month with two new events this year in that inspired theme. They created Art Speaks, and the Tuesday Paint Group created an Art Inspired Cuisine exhibition for This Century. I won't touch much on York County and James City County because I've done these presentations for them as well, but just as an example, we, in York County, Art Inspired Stories took place through metal artists in their opening night event and at book events at Caritree. And in James City County, we, we created an event out there called Meet Your Maker, and that was meet your maker of fine American and Virginia-made crafts. And one of our local crafts people got his, that's a piece of his work on the cover of Woodturning Magazine. We also, when I travel to another place, I love most to see the art of that place. And so we used this year our historic churches to develop a program that is art uniquely of this place. It was inspired by artwork that local artist Betty Bab created. She was reading diaries of the Jamestown Settlement, and she came across some notations in the diaries about the flowers. And so she worked with William &amp; Mary to research the flowers that would have been in bloom in 1607 when John Smith arrived, and she painted that series of botanicals. For the first time, those were shown this year in the church at Jamestown during Arts Month, and we had concerts along with that exhibition. And then that exhibition was also a way to help us just celebrate the Colonial Parkway. So on that Saturday, there was an early morning concert in the Wren Chapel. Then you could get on the Colonial Parkway, go out to Jamestown and experience the artwork and the concert that I just described. Get back on the Colonial Parkway and go to Yorktown and Grace Episcopal Church in Yorktown for about 30 or 35 years. Every year, they commission these beautiful folk art crosses. And so they put those on exhibition that day along with concerts. And then you came full circle that night, and at 8:00, there was a concert at Bruton Parish Church. So that brought you right back to Williamsburg again, and hopefully you had a nice dinner in Merchant Square and spent the night. I will move on to some success stories, and there were many, but I will just cover a few. When we started Arts Month two and a half years ago, during the fall, James City County did not have a single art event. We, we developed, we spent the first two years developing lots of, as many events as we could. Last year, we tried to bring those separate events together into a festival. That festival was anchored by the Newtown Chalk Art Festival and the Glass Art Festival in Newtown. And that took place for three days. And then the Tourism Alliance, Lisa Pacheco, found this, these color races where every kilometer you are splashed with a different color. And she says you end the race looking like Skittles. So Color the Town culminated the fourth day of the Newtown Arts Festival, and that ended at Sullivan Square. Lake Matoka always is a, is a much-used and loved venue during Arts Month. We kick off Arts Month with a Virginia Symphony Orchestra concert at Lake Matoka. It's used again to, in the middle of the month for a benefit concert for housing partnerships. And then at the end of the month, Arts Month closes with the Williamsburg Jazz and Wine Festival, which takes place at Lake Matoka and also here in the City Square Arts Pavilion The Colonial Williamsburg Foundation has had this year, and still has, a Southern Painters from the 16 and 1700s exhibition. And for a year and a half, the Linda Matinee Art Gallery studied and reached out and traveled across the South to make relationships with today's contemporary Southern painters. We brought them during Arts Month this year for a nine-week Contemporary Southern Painter Show, which was kind of a nod, a mirror of Colonial Williamsburg's effort. And that is a picture of Art Rosenbaum that he painted, and he also came, he's a Grammy Award-winning composer. He came to visit us. He stayed at the Gilman's B&amp;B while he was here, and he performed some of his original music for us. Also, in that same vein, we expanded the plein air festival this year to four weeks and created a retail shop for the plein air artists during Contemporary Artisans Weekend. And we're doing a lot of things right now to try to even up that even more. I mentioned Contemporary Artisans Weekend, and we really pushed those artists and artisans to talk about themselves and talk about their stories. And as you can see, people just become very engaged with them. That takes place during Family Weekend on Duke of Gloucester Street. Another success story, WHRO's Art Appraisal Fair started at the Williamsburg Landing their first year, and they sold out in two weeks. So they came to us the next year and said, "We need the biggest square footage place that you have." And they really liked the new Doubletree Conference Center, so they moved there. And they sold out this year, that event as well. So a collateral benefit that we get from that is they film a TV show called Williamsburg Art Appraisal Fair. And every time they have a pledge week, we're, that, that's on air. So I've seen the back of my head many times on WHRO over the last year. Merchant Square supported an occasion for the arts this year by creating a free-to-the-public concert, and it just flooded Merchant Square concert, and it just flooded Merchant Square with concert goers. It was extremely successful, and they have committed to bring the same band back again next year. We, two events that are three years old in, in Arts Month really had a success this year in a different way. Both of them really tightened their event footprints, which got their costs under control. Especially that logistical tweaking very much helped the gallery crawl. And the gallery crawl's footprint this year included the Arts District, the B&amp;B District, City Square, and High Street. And they were successful this year in reaching out to the timeshares, and the timeshares actually brought buses of folks in to take advantage of the gallery crawl. And so what's next? Always, 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 we are trying to create the Williamsburg Arts brand to complement our Williamsburg history brand. Always, always, for me, I am looking for more local advertising and local promotion so that our events are sustained through local participation. And the, the Arts Commission, just a couple of weeks ago, had a listening session for the arts groups, and the number-one thing they asked for help with was local promotion. So that, we are just saying that the support of locals by dining out during Arts Month, shopping, attending arts events is one way to support those local events that are working so hard to create, to create that event for us. And Arts Month and the Arts Commissions are exploring some new ideas. One of them is creating a public art map. We have so much public art in the Historic Triangle, that map would not necessarily have to be a paper map. It could be done with smartphones and QR codes on the statues that we have. And there are, for example, on, just on Jamestown Island, I think 32 statues of monuments. We would love, and we're exploring, a way to bring our, the Arts District more into view during Arts Month. We would love to have a sculpture show down Richmond Road, and then maybe, if we could find a sponsor, the public could vote on which one we would like to keep. And if we could find someone to buy it over time, in 10 years, we would have 10 sculptures going down Richmond Road, so. Also, Arts Month is working with Communication Specialist Kate Hoving and Arts Commission Chair Greg Lilly to develop local public access television promotion. And those could be arts interviews, guided tours of our museums, art demonstrations, classes, concerts, that kind of thing. The James River Association would like to have a fall arts event that celebrates our local waterfront. I am, along with Bob Harris, are encouraging them to consider a waterfowl show as their offering, because that would be something unique. And they also, they're partnering with Eco Discovery Park. Prince George Street supports Second Sunday very faithfully, and they are looking in 2014 to add a chalk art event to their movie night offering. And to strengthen arts branding, we would like to start thinking about an arts focus also for that spring shoulder season. The Virginia Tourism Commission conducted a study last year for the Garden Club of Virginia, which showed that arts tourism and gardens tourism is nearly the same person. And so the Historic Triangle is very well-positioned to become a hub for garden tours in summer. That, and in that study, we learned that those garden travelers are very interested in art. They're interested in wine, dining, and shopping, as well as the other things listed there. So for the first time this coming year, in an effort and hope to get people to spend the night, the Williamsburg and Yorktown Garden Week tours are offering a two-day discounted ticket. So hopefully, folks will stay overnight and go both, to both of those tours. And we continue to just keep our business head on to just encourage strategies to help underwrite the cost of promotion and event development. And so kind of matched some, some ideas that, that with, on the, on the left, with ideas that actually worked on the right. For example, we want to encourage partnerships with our upscale restaurants. And Bluetalent and Trellis this year, and, well, for the last three years, have created an occasion for wine and an occasion for beer, which, which do add that upmarket value to occasion for the arts. And I won't read all those for you, but. Next year, in thinking about spring, York County is already moving in that direction. In the first weekend in May, there's a two-day, new two-day art event planned for York County, art at the River and a blues and barbecue festival. And Bob has some additional things to share with you, but I just want to say your local arts industry appreciates your help very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Terri.
Good afternoon, City Council Mayor. Appreciate the time to give you an update as well. First, we just got the numbers in. Thanks to Phil and his team for getting the January tax data to us so quickly. Still have a few of our lodging properties that will be hopefully reporting some more data in, as well as some of the restaurants. So the numbers for 2013 could improve slightly, but unfortunately, we did see a slight decrease, as you can see, from 2012 to 2013. One of those things that certainly impacted, the biggest loss was in our lodging community for the city. And I think one of the things we all realized was going to impact that was the loss of the Williamsburg Hospitality House. And talking to some of the staff of the Hospitality House, they traditionally run about 55% occupancy in the month of September, and then the month of October, they usually do around 65% occupancy before they close. Looking at that would give you about 10,800 additional rooms. And this year, the city for those two months was down about 9,500 rooms. So that certainly had an impact on our results this year, but we hope to see those numbers increase again next year and go back up to a higher level. That being said, since we've started the Arts Month promotion, we are averaging about $5 million a year in additional revenues for the city, for a total of almost $20 million in additional revenues from 2009 to the current year. Tax collections during this time have grown to almost $700,000 in additional taxes compared to the base level of 2009. And so we look at some of the things that hit us this year. First, we had the LPGA that in 2012 was held during the month of September. That moved to the month of May for 2013. That certainly had an impact on James City County, but we believe that could have had an impact as well. But the real big thing that hit us was the, kind of the worry about government shutdown and certainly the impact that that had on it, as you see through some of these headlines, but also through the Gallup poll of, one of the sharpest drops that we've seen in consumer confidence came really right at the heart of our Arts Month programming. A lot of our advertising targets the Washington, D.C. market, and that, of course, is one of the key markets that was really impacted the greatest with the government shutdown as well. Some of the spots we did this year, we adjusted our strategy and tested a couple of things this year for the first time. Raleigh, North Carolina, we ran 118 spots. We also tried to do some spots in Western Virginia, which is a really affordable market for us, while keeping our Washington, D.C. and Baltimore markets pretty strong for us. Western Virginia really did not show us the big return as far as people coming to our website that we had hoped for, as far as a change. But in the Raleigh-Dormer area, we saw really a huge increase in visits coming to the website, which was encouraging. Overall, for the website, we saw a 71% increase in visits during the months of September and October. We also, during this time, did a Facebook campaign that resulted in an additional, I think it was 2,000 folks who signed up to be fans of our Facebook campaign, taking it from 30,000 to 32,000. This is a hard one for you to see. I'm sorry, I need to change the colors on that. But you can see this year, we did have some increase in funding, in funds available for Arts Month through the grant to the Virginia Tourism Corporation. We also, with your help, were able to update the creative that we used for this year as well. We also beefed up the paid search a little bit, as well as Facebook, but we kept those spots out there with TV. The same creative was not used that we used in previous year. We went from still video, or still shots, photography, to actual video, and I'll show you hopefully an example of that in a couple of seconds. As Terri mentioned earlier, we tried to really look at the website and take the feedback that we had from all of our partners as to ways that we could try to make it easier for the visitor to discover what it was that was happening during the weeks that they were here. This is an example, the top in that kind of purple bar, you see all the various weeks of Arts Month there. So a consumer, once they go into the event calendar, could choose the week that they were coming in. We had some complaints the year before that there were a lot of events that happened for the entire month, and it took a long time to get to kind of the meat of the core events for that week. So we're pleased with this. We still have to do some work to refine this for next year, but this did seem to, to work very well for us, and the consumer engagement on our website and the calendar events increased greatly this year. So we're pleased to see that. With the website, one of the things I think we really need to work for is to grow in the amount of video content, particularly with the profile of the various artists that we have there. We currently use static images, and we kind of give a description as to what they do and links to the address and what have you, that you can go visit and see their artwork. That's an area that I think we need to find a way to really personalize the website by doing possibly some video that focuses on our artists, have them talking about what they do, as a way to make the website really engage that visitor and give them more reasons to come and visit those artists who live in the Williamsburg area. We also added the, the new spots to the front page, and hopefully this will work. Let's see here, I'm not sure how I'm going to do this. I might have to point to this, and AV will hopefully tell me if I'm doing it wrong. Thank you, I'm sorry. Oh, the mouse, okay. That mouse.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Arts Month, a whole new season to escape to Williamsburg. Enjoy gallery stalls, musical performances, outdoor art festivals, and much more. Spend a spectacular September in Williamsburg. Go to artsinwilliamsburg.com.
So last year, we had static photos we kind of put together with some motion. This year, we actually were able to, to use the video. And let's see if I can get this one to also play for you. We did two spots this year.
Arts Month, a whole new season to escape to Williamsburg. Enjoy gallery stalls, dance performances, outdoor art festivals, and much more. Spend a spectacular September in Williamsburg. Go to artsinwilliamsburg.com.
We're also beginning to work now, actually, on the update of the Williamsburg Arts Map to have that ready for probably some time this summer. We'll have that out, but that takes work now. And so we're looking at, how can we really make that a better, more useful tool for the visitor coming to our area? And any input that you have on that, we would appreciate hearing as well. We put that out at our state visitor center, up in New Kent County, at all of our local visitor centers. Colonial Williamsburg distributes this, and a lot of the galleries and restaurants also distribute it. So it's an important tool to give our visitors, once they're here, to tell them a little more about the, the destination and what there is to do from an arts experience. I'll go through these quickly. All of our publications this year, we've added Arts Month features because we thought that was important to push some of our key events for the destination. So you see the highlighted area there in our vacation planner. We actually had some additional space. We have two sections in there this year promoting Arts Month and encouraging people to come visit during that time. Even our rack brochure, which is our largest produced brochure, we've added a section about arts, and we talk about Arts Month as part of that copy. This is our group tour planner, I'm sorry, this is our meeting planner that we send out to meeting planners who are coming to this area. Because you never know, I mean, September, October, really busy months for meetings in this destination. It's nice to tell them that we have a variety of events that they can look at when they're having a meeting and possibly encourage the folks who are attending their conference to take some of their leisure time and go visit some of our arts events that are occurring. I mentioned earlier, we use Facebook. Facebook continues to, to grow. We're actually now close to 45,000 fans on our Facebook page, which is great. We now to find ways to continue to increase engagement with those folks so that they continue to use that as a, as a resource. But we did a variety of posts throughout Arts Month to try to inform potential visitors and those in the area of events that were occurring, and make sure that every weekend they had an idea as to what was happening. We also did that through the Williamsburg Weekends eBlasts that we do, as well as we had encouraged WADMAC, and they included it in the eBlasts that they send out to their consumer database as well. This year, for the first time, we tried something new. These are the little spinning displays that we have that, on one side, talks about Arts Month, the other side, it talks about Christmas in Williamsburg. We ordered over 200,000 of the little business cards that you see that fit in the holder to the right. One side, again, features Arts Month, the other side talks about Christmas in Williamsburg. We'll be reordering and kind of updating these as we go through this year. Our point with that is we have a lot of people who visit in the spring and visit in the summer, who may be looking, we hope, looking for a reason or an idea to come back in either the fall or during the holiday season. So the goal with this is that while they're at a restaurant or one of our lodging partners, they pick up one of the cards and take it with them so they can start looking and getting ideas as to why they might want to come back during Arts Month or during Christmas in Williamsburg. Terri mentioned some of the magazines that were out there. I have to applaud her because she actually also has another, yet another hat she wears. She's a writer, and she really worked hard to get a lot of great Arts Month content into some of the publications in the destination, and that certainly makes a difference. I think that's something we have to really look at, working on this next year going forward in the future. Are strategically picking some travel writers who can come to this destination during some of the, the busy weekends of Arts Month and experience it, and hopefully take that back and, and share that with their readers as another way to, to get the message across. This was also a jumbo postcard that our partner, William E. Wood, distributed for the second year in a row to, how many people did that go to this year, Terri?
10,000.
10,000 people who received this message. The other side, and I don't show that one because we're not as proud of that one, that's their, their commercial message. It talks about what they're doing, has their logo, but they did offer this to us for a second year, and we do appreciate that. That's the kind of partnership we really need to try to grow with people out there. That didn't cost us anything other than the time that Joanna put into developing the creative for this. But this goes out to all 10,000 people, and it gives a list of some of the major events we have here during Arts Month. We just want to say thank you. We have a long way to go with Arts Month. We're continuing to grow the brand. It's exciting every year to hear people talk more and more about, "Oh, it's Arts Month," and "What's going on this weekend?" We feel like there's a great potential there to continue to, to build on this. We need some more major events. We need some of the events that we have to continue to grow, like Terri talked about with, for example, the Chalk Fest this year, it's grown into a full weekend festival event. We need to continue to try to grow some of those types of events. I serve with an occasion for the arts, and I know they're also taking a look at their event to say, "Where do we want to go in the future, and how can we make this event even better?" And that's encouraging because that's going to grow the appeal of Arts Month and of our arts events, which will, I hope, translate into growth of visitation as well. Any questions?
Bob, thank you, and Terri, thank you. Let me turn to council for any comments or questions.
No questions, just, Terri, I'm just amazed at the breadth of programming that you helped pull together and, I don't know what to say, other than I can't imagine putting, I mean, you have a comment in here about the goal is not to have more programming, but have some more significant program. And I completely agree with that, because looking at the list this past year, I mean, it was almost overwhelming. There were so many things going on, and then you start to feel bad. You can't do even a small fraction of them. But getting those, being able to pull together those bigger events and give people more reasons to come and spend the night, or spend the weekend, or spend a few days, really seems like a, a direction we should be looking at to, to take. And I know it's hard to do without additional funding.
And that's one of the things we're really working on, Paul. To your point, we're really trying to target that second weekend in September. That's the weekend after Labor Day for our lodging partners. That's typically one of the slowest weekends, certainly of September for them. If we can get another big event on that weekend, that would be a real winner, not just for the destination, but particularly for our lodging partners, if they can generate some additional room nights. So that's something we're really trying to, to work toward.
And we've been saying each of the years that it's going to take some time to really get this month, or I don't know if we should call it a month anymore, we've got to come up with a new name, firmly established. But one thing that was really encouraging to me was the program, Terri, that you did prior to Arts Month, where you invited local business owners, hoteliers, and others to come together and learn about what come together and learn about what Arts Month was and how they could participate. And it seemed like the level of participation and the energy at that event this past year was significantly greater than it had been in the past. So I think it really is gaining a foothold in the community now, expanding that footprint to the broader region and the markets that feed us from a touristy standpoint would be the next step. But I appreciate all the efforts that everybody put forth. Thank you.
Scott?
Terry, you know, you talked about attracting and really hitting that local market. Majority of these things you've presented today, to me, really speak to the value added for living in Williamsburg. And these are the things that the locals can take advantage of throughout a seven-week period. That's really special. That's unique to being here, that we have the option to experience those things. I just think it's important, and as Paul pointed out, the next step is to translate that value added that we experience to our potential visitors, because, you know, it tends to be when I have a lot of people come in to see me, within that time period, and that's really when I like to show this place off. So if we can package that and, you know, really put that out as part of our larger brand, I think it'd be a big success.
Absolutely. It's good.
No, I applaud the coordinated effort. I think that's what it's gonna take to make this a bigger and better thing for the community and for our visitors. So keep up the good work. If I can get a copy of your presentation, that would be great, it's not in our packet.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, sure.
Well, I'm with Paul. You make me feel guilty that I can't go to more of these things, because they all sound wonderful, but you are doing a great job.
Thanks. Thank you.
Well, thank you, guys. And again, I mean, when we announced Arts Month a few years ago, I don't think any of us imagined where we would be today, and the breadth and quality of activities going on. And if we can keep that going into the future, I think this is a big plus for both all of us that live here, as well as for attracting people to come here. So thank you for all the efforts you've made. It's been really terrific.
So a lot of fun.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much.
Our next background presentation is Mr. Nester and sign regulation updates.
Just a few items there.
Yeah, just a few minor items here.
Well, I guess you could say there's an art involved in writing ordinances, but I doubt that we'll see any on exhibit during Arts Month.
But do the sign regulations update material? Does that deal with sculpture? Okay. Ice cream cones, however, are in here. You notice the ice cream cones, so.
This builds on council's discussion following the public hearing we had last month, and what I've tried to do is break this down into discrete items to get direction from city council on what to do with all of these. My goal is, once I get the direction from council, I will go ahead and modify the original ordinance that you have, and have that ready for you on Thursday. So I'd like to do these one by one. The first one is freestanding signs in the midtown, the new midtown sign district, and the proposal in the ordinance is to increase the sign areas allowed from 12 to 18 square feet for an individual freestanding sign, and from 20 to 24 square feet. So I'm listing two options, make the changes proposed, or leave it the way it is. As you can see from the ARB minutes, they discussed it, and they didn't have a consensus. Some thought that larger signs weren't necessary, and others thought you're going from smaller signs downtown, a little bit larger than larger still when you get to the corridor sign district, so.
And the planning commission recommended option one?
They recommended option one, and this map shows the two areas of the midtown sign district in Orange, the college commercial area, and the arts district area.
And any thoughts on how we'd like to go on this one?
Well, I'll, can I?
Yeah, go on.
I'll start. Number one, I want to thank Reed, because he took what I thought was a very complex thing and broke it down, so it's actually understandable. And I did try to go through this, because I have some fairly strong feelings about signs. I don't like this idea that this creeping bigger signs, that Williamsburg has to look like everywhere else, and you have to keep doing bigger signs all the time. And I keep remembering McDonald's, besides Clyde, and you, who's been here long enough to remember how McDonald's was gonna refuse to come if they couldn't have the golden arches. They absolutely would not come, and the city held firm and said, no golden arches, and McDonald's has been here a long time. And there aren't, and they've also, if you go around the country, there aren't golden arches in very many places anymore. So I just, I just think we ought to try to, we don't have to have huge signs like everybody else does. I don't think it's necessary. And I think the quarter path is a good example of that. They fussed and fussed, that was on the planning commission, they want a bigger sign, bigger signs, the only way they were gonna get tenants. Well, they're full, they got permission to have a bigger sign, they never put in the bigger sign, because they don't need it. And I think that's, I think we need to keep those kinds of things in mind. Anyway, I tried to read the ARB fairly carefully, and I, for the first, this first one, the midtown, I would prefer to go with option two, leave it the same way it is. I don't think we need bigger signs. So I've had my piece now.
Anyone else want to jump in there?
Sure. You, we don't, as a customer or resident of this area, who generally knows where places are, I agree that they don't need bigger signs, because I can find them. But I also know what it's like, partially because I travel regularly for work, to be in places I've never been before, and looking for some things, and not always knowing what the thing is that I'm looking for. I might be looking for a place to eat, or I might be looking for a place to shop, or I might be looking for a place to do some form of business, and I'm doing it in a car, driving on a road with which I'm not completely familiar, and trying to identify which businesses are on either side of me. And that's not always easy to do, and what's really frustrating as somebody who's traveling is trying to get an idea of what's in an area, and you can't, it's hard to do because the signs are small or hidden. And I agree with you, we don't need to go overboard, we don't need enormous signs, we don't necessarily need the golden arches. But I think it's important to think about the perspective of somebody in a moving vehicle on a road where they're not completely familiar with traffic patterns, they're not always entirely sure where they're going, and I think we all see plenty of that as we're driving around town with the cars in front of us. And I just want to make sure that when we have businesses that are there for the purpose of meeting the needs of those people who are coming here to spend their money with us, that we make it as easy as possible, within reason and with aesthetic concerns taken into account, we make it as easy as possible for them to find those businesses. So from that standpoint, because I'm definitely in favor of it in the, I guess the, would that be the farther west of the two? I'm a little more concerned about it in the, the one that's.
College commercials.
Yes, because that's a little bit more, it's so close to the downtown area, to the Merchant Square area, to a part of the community that has, what I feel is a completely different character from the other part of the midtown. So I don't know that this is an option, but I'd almost be inclined to go with one on the college, I'm sorry, two on the college commercial, and then option one on the one that's farther out. Does that make sense?
Yeah. I think I like it. Doug?
Yeah, and I don't disagree with either of you, but I think following more along the lines of Vice Mayor Freiling, I think if you're in a business trying to attract customers, and you want to attract people that don't necessarily know that you're there, it's important to have, you know, a sign of some substance that attracts your attention. And particularly in this area where there are so many distractions with just pedestrians alone, you know, you tend to focus on, you know, being safe and cautious, and so, you know, a slightly larger sign in that area, I think, would be helpful to the business.
And it's, you know, the move from 12 square feet to 18 square feet is from a three by three to a, what, four and a half by four and a half. I mean, it's not, it's not, by any sort of spectrum of sizes of signs, it's not very big.
Right.
The last few times we've gone traveling, and Paul, you travel a lot more than I do, we've used our Garmin to find restaurants. I mean, I think that's one of the things that's happening, is people are using media and their smartphones to find where they want to go, instead of looking out the window at signs. It's safer, but.
And restaurants are a little bit more out there on the web, and so they're on GPSs and more on websites. But when you get into the arts district, some of those little shops maybe, you know, have a different presence.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Online and technologically. So I'm okay with option one in both, but.
Scott, you got any thoughts?
I kind of like Paul's idea of how it transitions to downtown, because I do think that has a different ambiance.
Is that, how would that be accomplished, Reed? Is that, I mean?
Well, we have, within the midtown sign district, as it's set up now, there's different provisions for sidewalk signs, which we'll be talking about in the next item, between the college commercial area and the arts district area, so.
So you could do it that way, yeah.
I'll find a way to do it.
Just remind me, one of the other distinctions is, I think in the college commercial area, you also get much more pedestrian traffic than you do farther out.
Yeah, no, that's, your automobile thing is much more applicable to the arts district area than it is to the college commercial, I think, for that pedestrian reason.
So to do a hybrid, as Paul suggested, would be comfortable.
Do you live with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, Reed.
Okay.
Thanks.
The next one deals with sidewalk signs, and in the midtown sign district, these are, and I'll be talking about the whole issue of sidewalk signs as one of the last signs, but here it's just how we allow those, or if we allow them in the midtown sign district. In the midtown district, the sidewalk signs have to be on private property. They can't be on the sidewalk. I guess, essentially, we're talking about A-frame signs. And the reason for making the distinction between allowing them in the college commercial area, which is option one, and not going with option two, allowing them in both, is the fact that the sidewalk signs, as we work through it, were seen as really tied in to the pedestrian environment of the downtown area. The problem with allowing these signs in the arts district areas, for example, you have City Green, where you would end up, there could be four A-frame signs in front of City Green. Right next door to City Green is Langley Federal Credit Union, that's in a corridor sign district, not in the midtown district, so they couldn't have one. My concern is if you allow the A-frame signs from Brook Street out to the shopping center, then it becomes much harder to enforce that throughout our corridor districts, because people further out the street in the corridor are gonna see, well, you know, right around the shopping center, people are putting these A-frame signs out, so I want to put one out. So that's the reason for making the distinction between the two. Now, for flexibility in the arts district, the Architecture Review Board's design guidelines allow more flexibility in colors. There's not a strict color limit in the arts district. The consensus on the size of freestanding signs was to allow larger freestanding signs in the art district. So there are some additional things that you can do in the arts district with the changes proposed to be made that you can't do now, but I would not favor going with option two because of the issues I've raised. The third option would be just don't allow any sidewalk signs anywhere in the midtown district.
Any thoughts?
I'm happy with option one.
I think it's, we just talked about, it's a nice compromise, and if you don't get the bigger sign, you can get the sidewalks.
And back to your pedestrian nature of that area versus the other.
Yeah.
And Scott, you okay with that, or?
Yes, except for the, just the general idea of what we want the arts district to become. And with that being said, once we get a little closer, there's no reason we can't reassess this.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're gonna have to think, come back to addressing sort of what we want the arts district to look like, and what we want to be able to take place there. But at this point, we may not be quite there.
I think it's good to take an evolving process to this, you know.
Yeah, this is sort of the crack in the door. If the monster doesn't jump out, then you can open a little bit further.
We don't know what we need in the future until.
Exactly.
Over time, we've made a lot of little adjustments here and adjustments there, so it's certainly, if we keep with option one, it's certainly sometime in the future we could revisit the issues.
I've been comfortable with that?
I have.
Okay, thanks, Reed.
Window signs, the, I think a lot of the discussion on this talked about if signs more than three foot behind the window, it isn't counted, and I had the slide of the sign at Red Hot and Blue, the BBQ, that's pretty visible. And the reason we put the three feet in there is to try to draw a clear line where you weren't saying that, well, I can see this from the sidewalk, and it's a sign, when it's more of part of your interior display than a sign. Now, we have Red Hot and Blue, and we have the neon sign above the Walgreens entrance that are both clearly visible from the outside. What, I reexamined this whole issue. I looked at our existing ordinance, which is my option one, leave it as proposed. I looked at what was proposed, and then I've come up with an option three with four changes that I think clarify things, and one would be removing references to window signs from the building mounted sign definition, and move this to the window sign sections in the three sign districts. Number two would be to move the exemption from three feet to 10 feet, so anything that, if you're more than 10 feet, it's not counted. But this would mean that Red Hot and Blue and the Walgreens sign would be legal nonconforming signs, but they couldn't come back and do, someone couldn't do a similar thing. My third change would be to continue to allow internally illuminated window signs in the corridor district, provided the sign area is deducted from the building mounted sign area, and the sign design is approved by the ARB. And then the fourth change would be to continue to prohibit internally illuminated window signs in the downtown and midtown sign districts, except for open sign in the midtown sign district. So I think, I think this gives, requires more setback for signs, and sort of refines what we were trying to do, so I think this improves over the original proposal.
Any thoughts?
I like option three. I think Reed's worked hard and captured a lot of what we talked about.
Scott, you?
Scott, I'm with you. Yeah, I think, I don't know yet.
Excuse me. Excuse me.
You know, I could go with one or.
You know, I could go with 1 or 3. The planning commission did recommend option 1.
Yeah, but they never saw 3. Planning Commission.
Seems to me 3 begins to get it. I mean, it refines it in a way that makes it workable.
I mean, I don't want to put words in the commission's mouth, but if option 3 was originally proposed, I don't think the commission would have had a problem with option 3.
Then I'm comfortable with it as well.
Okay. Everybody okay? Okay, option 3. Next is neon signs.
Right, and I have a number of, and I guess 1 would, well, option 1 was leave the ordinance as proposed, which you could have a neon sign if allowed, if it's more than three foot back. Well, we've changed that, that you have to be 10 foot back now. Option 2 would be to totally eliminate the three-foot exception, but we've resolved that, and we've done option 3. Option 4 would, but this says basically, other than the open signs, you're still not allowed to have any neon signs anywhere in town. And you have some that are grandfathered in. I think Paul's Deli is one. But there are some new businesses, Pita Pit, for example, frozen yogurt is neon, that's in the midtown sign district, that's not allowed. And you have things like, like the China House, where you see they have an LED sign that would not be allowed. So option 4 would say you can, your illuminated window signs could include, you could have one neon or LED illuminated sign with a size limit of six square feet. You know, another way you could do it would be just to say you could have a, in the corridor district, you could have a neon or LED sign if it would come out of your building mounted sign area. There's probably, looking around town, there's probably, I would say, there could be 20 neon signs that shouldn't be there. You have little ones, Virginia Lottery, and things like that, so.
What's the concern with those? I mean, I think they add vitality to what's going on. I'm not sure I understand the concern with these, because they're fairly small and they're going to be back from the windows. What's?
Well.
I'm not asking you that. That's a rhetorical question.
I don't necessarily disagree with what you're saying, but I would say, I would relate that the planning commission and the architecture review board felt strongly that there shouldn't be any neon signs other than the open sign. I mean, if you could look and say, is there anything wrong with some of the convenience stores having that little Virginia Lottery sign up there? So that's alternate 4, which, now, I don't, I think you can draw the, if you wanted to allow some neon signage, you would, I think, want to draw the line as you get closer to downtown. But you could, you know, if you wanted to allow them, you could allow them in the corridor district. But that's, that's the option 4, if you wanted to allow neon signs in circum, circumstances.
Take like the Westbury Shopping Center substation and China House, both of those are inset. There's significant, it was a covered sidewalk in front of those. So you drive by there, even in the daytime, you know, the open sign is lit, but sometimes from Monticello, you won't even know if it's open. Depending on how light is. And like Clyde said, you take Paul's Deli as an example, you know, that's had neon signs in it as long as it's been open. And that's kind of.
Kind of adds to its local flavor.
Exactly.
Well, and I, you know, I, with you, I think, Mr. Mayor, I mean, they do add vibrancy. I mean, the little yogurt sign in Pita Pit, it's not offensive to me. I mean, open signs are more offensive to me, but, you know, I'm not going to complain about it. So I think if, in the red hot and blue, the way it's positioned, you know, three feet inside, or however far it is inside, I think it's, you know, it's part of their design decor. And it just adds a little bit of element. It's kind of that Memphis barbecue style that you would expect if you were in that area.
But the golden arches were part of McDonald's. That was their argument, that they couldn't do a McDonald's without the golden arches.
Yeah, I hear you, that argument, but then.
But those were 40-foot golden arches. These are, these are six square feet, sort of signs. I, I just, and this is in a corridor district, you know, I'm just not.
In a struggling corridor.
You haven't said anything.
Well, I'm torn on this one, because if the ARB and planning commission feels strongly about this, that carries some worry. The other part of it is, and Reed, help me here, the yogurt sign and the Virginia Lottery sign and the signs you showed us on Monticello, those are currently not legal.
Correct.
So if we allow, I know what the area looks now with a few choices to, maybe they weren't aware of the regulations, so they put the signs in. But then if we open it up and everybody puts a sign, and I'm not saying everybody will, but you know, we're going to have more neon signs than we do, I don't know what the effect of that is, so.
Mercury Boulevard.
And it's not the strip in Las Vegas either. But I, I guess really, it's the planning commission and ARB, if they felt strongly against this, I'm hesitant to go that way.
I would err on the side of caution. And as you say, you know, ARB and, you know, I guess I'd like to, at some point in the future, have this come back for broader discussion and with the ARB and planning commission of sort of exactly what are the concerns and what have you. But so.
So, Mr. Ponzi, you prefer option 4?
I like option 4, because it at least gives me the option of prioritizing whether they're, it's their open sign, or it's whatever neon they choose in that district.
Either option, option 4 would allow, you're allowed in the corridor district, you can have your open sign anyway. You're allowed an open sign. This would be, in addition to the open sign, you could have one other neon sign, and I just arbitrarily picked a six-square-foot size limit, which probably encompasses most of the single signs. Now, this, that does not address Pita Pit, because that's in the midtown district. You know, this just, this is just the corridor district. So, you know, that's one of the options that could be considered.
Well, the train's out of the station, so we have to do something. And I think my preference would be to do nothing and just kind of let it go.
Which is option 3, right?
Yeah.
Correct, that's which we've already.
Option 3.
Yeah.
Could we, or should we have more conversation on this topic with planning commission and ARB?
Well, I guess, you know, for now, I could live with option 3, but I would like to request both planning commission and ARB to, at some point in the future, to give some more thought to this type of signage and what it does, what it does, you know, what you always worry about are what are the unintended consequences? And so.
Well, and maybe in time, those signs will get better. It's like streetlights that now shine down and don't.
A lot better, yeah.
Yeah.
They were 20 years ago.
Yeah, so maybe, maybe it'll be different.
And I don't, guys, I'd hate to, again, open Pandora's box.
Right.
Because ARB has a, you know, focused on this discussion that's different than ours, just less encompassing than ours. And planning commissions is somewhat the same way. And, you know, and again, it's, you know, these are struggling corridors, and we need businesses to come in there and thrive. And anything we do to hamper them, I think, is counterintuitive.
Might be interesting to talk to the EDA about it. Sorry.
Have one really big work session.
Are we comfortable with option 3 and requesting that ARB and EDA and the planning commission maybe give this more thought going into the future?
Yeah.
Does that seem reasonable?
Yeah.
You okay with that, Reed?
The next one, I don't have a slide for, but that's illumination was taught, discussed a little bit the last time about should we have illumination limits.
The building mounted flags?
Well, I thought.
Sorry, did we already do that?
I thought since we were on neon signs and illumination.
Sorry, okay.
We talked about should there be illumination brightness standards for signs, and we really don't think that we need the regulations. And if we had them, you know, it's, you got ambient light and everything else. So how do you really enforce that?
We've already got a regulation that says if you have, and we're talking internally illuminated signs, or are we talking to any kind of illumination?
Well, I mean, if you set illumination limits, I think it would be any type of illumination.
But on the internally illuminated, it's, you cannot have a white background.
Right.
So that by itself limits significantly what you can do to illuminate from within.
Yeah.
I don't, has anybody seen any reason to?
Nope.
Don't.
Do anything here?
Don't.
Okay, the next, next one is building mounted decorative flags. And we were, the proposed ordinance made a change to allow the word "open" to be on a decorative flag, and to allow the sign area in addition to the building mounted sign area that was allowed. Option 2 would be to keep the existing regulations, including decorative flags as part of the building mounted sign area. So, and the decorative, the decorative flags would be 10 square, here's an example, one downtown Merchant Square, the gallery above Williams Sonoma, and that open flag's about eight and 1/2 square feet. And then here's a 15-square-foot sign that needs to be, if this change was made, would need to be moved, could be mounted on the building, but it couldn't be mounted on the freestanding sign. So the real question here is, do you want it to come, you know, if you're allowed 32-square-foot building mounted sign, you know, the way it is now, that 15-square-foot sign, that size, would have to come out of your building mounted sign area. The way it's proposed, it would be in addition to the building mounted sign area.
And that's what planning commission recommends.
That's what planning commission.
Anybody see any reason not to allow the?
Well, the ARB wasn't real happy about it.
ARB felt it should, ARB would have favored option 2.
Yes. Yeah.
I'm a flag guy. I pick flags again, just like other things, add varieties. But what do you guys think? Anybody?
I'd like to go with the ARB, but, you know, because I'm not a flag guy, but I don't feel strongly, either way.
Scott, are you?
I tend to adopt option 1, you know. Err on the side of people having good taste in what flag they choose. The two examples we saw seem to be.
You are such an optimist, Scott.
Option 1.
Sure. Okay.
Okay, option 1.
Okay, now we get into the.
Wait, there's more. There's always more.
Now, now, as we continue in our collaborative ordinance art project here, sidewalk signs. And I have two options here. One, leave the ordinance as proposed, allowing six-square-foot sidewalk signs constructed of wood, which may have a metal frame. Option 2 would be to allow more flexibility by allowing up to 10-square-foot signs constructed of wood, or wood, metal, or plastic face signs in a metal frame. Now, I gave you a, several pages where I've listed sizes and heights of signs that we have. Along Prince George Street, you know, the option 2 would make, 8 of 11 signs would meet all of the criteria. Option 1, 4 of the 11 signs would meet the criteria. I mean, this, and I got all the separate slides, and I'll just, you know, this is sort of the six-square-foot wooden sign. This isn't allowed in option 1. Option 2 says that has a metal sign and a metal frame, if it, as long as it uses the color palette in the design review guidelines, that would be acceptable. The blue tallon, that is a 10-square-foot sign, so that's too big now. And I guess the reason six-square-foot was recommended was that sign sitting where it is is okay. But if you looked at Prince George, the other side of Prince George Street, if every sign was 10 square feet, that might be a little much.
So why did you go from 6 to 10 with option 2?
That's just, I think, as I listened to the discussion, I think there was some thought maybe more of the signs ought to be made conforming that we have there now.
What about option 2 with 6 foot square instead of 10 foot square?
I mean, we, that's, you could do that, or you could, you know, you do 6 square feet, you could do 8 square feet.
Right.
I mean, you know, there's, but I think with the character of the downtown that we want to preserve and encourage, in my view, a, now, a sign like the Campus Shop, just an off-the-shelf plastic sign, I don't think that's the kind of sign we want. Now, you can probably make a better argument for Aromas, which is a plastic face sign in a metal frame. That's a much more finished-looking sign. So.
About 6 feet?
That's 6 square feet, 2 feet, that meets all the criteria in option 1, except for the materials. Of course, they couldn't have this sign and the chalkboards in the back. Of course, that meets the criteria. Now, the T and Spice sign is a very well-done sign, but that has, that's 7.8 square feet in area, and it's 28 inches wide instead of the 2 feet wide in, in option 1. So, and then the, you know, the sign behind it, that's, that is 10, that's about 10 square feet. The sign behind it, the body balance, that's another one like the Campus Shop. So, and the frozen yogurt sign, that's unfinished plywood, which isn't allowed in either option 1 or 2. I don't, I think we want to see more finished-looking signs on Prince George Street where we lay on the sidewalk. So.
I can see 10 feet maybe too big, 6, you know, so I could, I could almost say 8. But I think the real concern is how wide it is, and then the people being able to walk around. And so, you know, maybe if we did 8 with a maximum of 2 and 1/2 feet wide, and so maybe it might be a little taller.
If, if it was 8 with 2 and 1/2 feet wide, that would make. If, if it was eight with two and a half feet wide, that would make a sign like the Tea and Spice sign, that would be a conforming sign under that.
See, it seems to me that's...
Those two signs wouldn't be, this would be a conforming sign.
How big is the Aromas one?
Six square feet.
See, I think that's big enough. I like the, I like option two's flexibility in materials, but I think that 10 square feet is too big.
I'm option two, and...
Smaller.
Yeah, I could go with, I could go eight. Next, I could do six, I mean, whatever.
I mean, the Aromas sign is certainly big now.
Yeah, but the other one's there, and it's almost eight. The...
Yeah, that's, looking, looking at, go back, that's six square feet, that's 10 square feet, I think that's six square feet.
Who was almost eight feet?
The Campus Shop, that's eight square feet in area.
And, but that's narrow.
The tea, the spice and tea was seven and a half square feet.
That's, that's six. The, the ice cream cone is five and a half square feet, that's 7.8 square feet. The yogurt sign is 9.9, and the body balance is eight square feet. But the materials of those, even if we went to eight square feet, they wouldn't be allowed with the materials.
Scott, Paul, what are your thoughts on this?
This is really difficult, because I think the scale of the signs, like on Merchant Square, should be different than Prince George, because you take, like, the Trellis chalkboard sign, you're seeing that from a much further distance, because people are walking on the whole street.
Street, yeah.
Whereas this, you know, if it's crowded out there, you're working to get by it. So, there's going to be...
Okay, other sidewalk signs, you know, this is the Master Craftsman, that's six square feet. That would need to be moved off the sidewalk, but that would be okay. Here is, here is the Trellis sign, which is, is...
Over 10.
That's almost 11 square feet, and...
It's interesting, though, you see people going up and reading the menus at the Trellis on the menu thing, as opposed to reading the chalkboard. At least, that's what I see when I go by.
I'm big with that one.
That one, and that's, that is on the public sidewalk, that's five, that's five square feet. It's tall and narrow, but that's tall, that is tall, that's too tall per the Prince George Street. My feeling would be if we, if we're talking about this portable sidewalk-type signs, there ought to be a uniform regu, there ought to be a uniform size in the downtown, whether it's on Merchant Square, or Henry Street, or Prince George Street, there ought to be some consistency.
You know, on this last one, the, for me, the height is, it's too high. The other thing that doesn't seem right about it is it's right in the middle of the sidewalk, as opposed to positioning on one way, that, one side or the other, that allows people to, and it's on a especially wide piece of sidewalk, I get that.
But that would, the only signs allowed on the public sidewalk would be on Prince George Street. But this sign, it, this, the property line goes through about here, so there's plenty of room to move that back and still have the sign out there, but not...
So, based upon the conversation, I, option two seems to be the way we're leaning now, it's whether it's six feet or eight feet.
Yeah, the six, or eight, or 10, 10 feet, that seems to be...
That's probably a little much. Six or eight, I'd go with either one.
I like eight with no more than two and a half feet wide.
So, the, the spice, spice and tea sign is, is...
That's 7.8.
So, and, and that is no more than, that's not more than two and a half feet wide. I mean, that, that doesn't, to me, seem out of line with the, the others.
That's 28, so that's a little, two inches less than two and a half feet.
Can you do option two with eight feet?
Oh, we're just in the spirit of collaboration, you keep pushing me. All right, okay.
Okay, so option two at eight square feet?
Yeah.
With no more than two and a half feet wide, I think that's...
No more than two and a half feet wide, yeah.
And, and it's four, four foot high.
Four foot high, right, yeah.
And, and then, now, this option two said that since, well, with the 10 square feet, it said, in lieu of that sign, you could have three six-square-foot, three two-three square-foot chalkboards, and now it's down to eight square feet, so we could, you know, we could leave it at two chalkboards, or...
Yeah, I think that...
Two, two chalkboards.
Two chalk, okay.
And we have one final issue, and that's menu boards. I know when we had the public hearing, and this ties into the materials, Sharon Scruggs was speaking about this, and she had, you know, the typical menu board is like the Trellis, which, been there forever, you know, works great, and that's, that's what a menu board ought to be, you display a menu in it. Now, at Retro's, this is, it's a plastic face sign with a plastic silver-colored surround. It's, it's on a metal frame. The, the options, option one is leave it as proposed, allowing a six-square-foot menu board, which could have a metal frame. The other option two was, menu boards would have to be wood that presents a finished appearance, or wood, metal, or plastic face signs within a metal frame, like the Aroma sign. The Retro's menu board still wouldn't, you know, this would say you have to have a metal frame around it, and that has a plastic frame around it. So, the, the option two ties in with the option two for the sidewalk signs. It doesn't allow that particular sign, but it does give more options. If you want, what it would take if you wanted to allow that particular sign, you'd have to say something like, "Sign shall be constructed of wood, metal, or plastic that presents a finished appearance," and not mandate a metal frame. So, I guess that is option two A.
I don't know, I see some consistent, staying consistent with the, the other thing, makes sense, and, and again, I mean, what we're trying to do is create a certain look for the downtown, and it seems to me that, that, you know, I know consistency can be the bane of whatever, but there's, I think consistency pays off.
So, that would be option two.
Option two.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you, Reed.
Okay.
You walked us through that nicely, we appreciate that.
A good exercise in the art of ordinance, right?
That's right. And thank, thank you, and thank Planning Commission and ARB for their work also on this. This is terrific. Our next agenda item is City Council Communication. Anything, at this point? If not, scheduled meetings, Jack, anything?
Retreat Saturday morning.
Saturday morning at?
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock, and Neighborhood Council at eight.
O'clock.
I'll go to the beginning of that and leave in time for retreat.
We can go ahead without you.
No, we can't.
We need our leader.
Okay, anything else? Brings us to our last agenda item, open forum. Anyone who wishes to address council on any item, please come forward. If not, that completes our meeting.
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
Have a move, and, motion and a second to adjourn. Lisa, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Newton?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Harmon?
Aye.
Ms. Deaf Island?
Aye.
Mr. Pons, sir?